Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Called order the Benton County Board of Commissioners meeting July 2nd. We'll start.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Schlongen, here. Commissioner Heinan.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Okay. Approve or amend the agenda. Monty, do we got anything?
Mr. Chair, Steve Sting, IT Director, would like to add the county phone services contract. If you could please add that before, excuse me, right after consent.
Okay.
And then Chris Bird, county engineer, would like to update, excuse me, add an update on county road projects. He asked if you could add that right before Commissioner meeting updates. And that's all we have.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for agenda on the approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, county board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's shared consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, the public can or comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them vibrate. Thank you. Anybody for open forum? Okay. Consent agenda one through five.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for consent agenda items one through five. All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, phone system.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Morning. Before you have a contract renewal for our phone service provider. So this is the services that provide our public numbers, basically our dial tone outside of our systems here on premise. The current contract with our current vendor has ended and in reviewing the contract and some other vendors, we're looking to move our services from copper based, which is how all of our phone lines are brought in today, to fiber technology. And with that change, we'll bring some cost savings to the county on our phone systems and get us up and running on newer technology on the outside. This, these changes were made possible by some additions of fiber into our buildings and some redundancy in our mid, our state of Minnesota internet. So it was time to make the change and still be redundant. We reviewed our current vendor, which is Zayo, which is currently buying out Allstream. And then we also reviewed Midco as another potential provider. After consideration costs, Midco recommending that we move forward and switch our services over to Midco. They have fiber in both of our locations, in the sheriff's office where one of our phone controllers is, as well as here. They have extra strands, they can build a redundant circuit for us. When you move from copper to fiber, you're relying on whatever's in your building. And currently, we have copper in both buildings, but now we have fiber, but Midco's the carrier that has both of them. So there's a little bit of a lift there, but the good news is that it'll save money monthly for the county. And the reason for a bit of urgency here is to get it signed is our costs are going to continue to go up until we're off of copper. So I wanted to use this time to get a jump on this and get moving on it. So that's why we had the late ad. I just got this contract last night, so.
Mr. Chair, I had a couple of questions, Steve.
Yeah.
The seven, the three-year contract, is that a flat, is that fixed for three years or escalated?
The base costs are fixed. So like the PRI costs, all the channels, all the things they're delivering are fixed. The things that will fluctuate is, you know, like some surcharges, telco fees, some junk fees basically that are thrown in there. And then our long distance. So we have packages on each of the PRIs that give us a certain amount of numbers doing the research. We're well within the numbers that they're quoted, so I don't anticipate any major fluctuations, but it does move a little bit here and there depending on what we're using.
And then you talked about the price actually going down. Do you know what we're paying now?
Currently, our monthly bills are somewhere around thirty-four to thirty-six hundred for our three PRIs.
It's in half.
Yeah, so it cuts it down considerably.
Wow.
Yeah.
You'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah, so that's a little bit of the reason for the urgency here is we want to take advantage now that we're struggling.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
So to further answer your question, Commissioner Johnson, so there could be some move here. We've got some final details to work out that we still will have a few regular copper lines directly connected over at the sheriff's office. And I've been, but those are separate, we're keeping those with the old vendor until the nine-one-one switch over because some of those lines are tied into the nine-one-one system. So we're kind of juggling two things here and we're going live with that on the 10th of July. So our goal will be to cut those over to Midco after we figure out which ones we can disconnect permanently. And then we'll bring the rest of the copper lines over to the Midco services. So those costs will come back in, but it won't be significant. So it'll be bundled in with this. So this is the main PRI, there will be some costs additionally, but it's not going to be anywhere near the costs we're paying today.
Does this affect the highway department at all?
Yeah, this is, these are all the numbers for everybody, every one of our buildings. The way it works is every building is connected to us with fiber and we have the phone controllers here in this building and one in the sheriff's department. So all of our phone calls in and out, even up there, go through our buildings here.
Okay.
So these are, these are the public side of our service. We take care of everything behind our firewall. They provide the dial tone, that's basically how that, and the long distance carriers.
And a phone system do you have?
We're running a Mitel PX.
Okay.
Yeah, in the future, the reason a three-year agreement is we get some savings there. In our five-year outlook, we can be pretty sure we're going to, our current system will be supported going forward at least three years. And then eventually, we'll be looking at moving to more digitized phone systems. So the on-prem lifting all the hardware in and out, putting another on-prem phone system in here probably won't happen. We'll probably be doing some sort of hosted solution with like a Microsoft or a call tower or something where you, you go to mostly soft phones on your, on your computers.
Yeah.
You can still put desk phones out, that's totally fine, but it gives us some savings on hardware there too, so.
Mr. Chair, would any of that be tied in with a potential move to a new building?
Mm-hmm.
Not directly, no. I mean, it could if we, if we were able to time it correctly rather. No, I was thinking we could put new handsets in the new building and then we could just walk and move over. But it really, at least at first thought, shouldn't make too big of a difference. We can do, it's agnostic to the fizz.
So we won't be in a spot where we, if we build a new building, we're going to have this hardware that we wish we wouldn't have bought?
Nope, nothing like that.
Okay.
Nope, we're totally flexible.
And this, this hardware is more for incoming service.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This isn't, we're not doing anything with the current phone system. It's just the service connecting that.
Yeah, so yeah, and I should make that distinction a little more clear. Thank you, Commissioner Kapinski. This is our on-prem hardware that will eventually go away, but the services we're talking about in this contract is just delivering the dial tone to those.
Okay, perfect.
And just for reference, if we started the new building moving forward today, we're two years out from moving in.
Sure.
So I mean, we're only a year left on this one. And this is just the incoming service.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you for the questions.
Mr. Chair, with that information, I will move for approval and have the chair sign on the attached service order for Midco for incoming phone service.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I'll call the question, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Monty, dress code policy. Are we all going to suits? Are we all going that way?
I came from a place that I didn't have a tie, so apologize.
Okay. So why is this on your agenda today? Basically, the topic came up in our management team, a lot of it from human services too, I believe, where there was a desire to, I think, have more discretion at department level for appropriate attire. As you may have seen in the, in the, your board packet, the current policy is very prescriptive. It's very detailed. And I think departments are saying, look, you know, the environment of departments is so different. So for example, picture Highway Department, you know, the work that they do versus, let's just say Auditor Treasurer, where there's more public interaction. Every department really is so different. And I think over time, it's shown us that this dress code policy just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. And really, departments need to have the discretion to design their own dress code policies that work within their departments. I think also too, Mr. Chair, it's a message of saying to departments, okay, we trust you to exercise good judgment about what the dress code should be in your departments. So the management team then discussed what's in your packet here today. Anything that's new is an underline, that's basically the first page on a copy on the backside of the agenda. And all the old stuff has a strike through. So what the policy attempts to do is establish sort of a baseline of a few essential concepts that we'd like to see in every policy. And I can cover just a few of those. If you do have substantial face interaction, you should have business casual. Department heads could waive that requirement on special days. I know, for example, for a long time here in the Minister's Office, we do jeans on Friday. And no instance should your attire have offensive words or images. And you must have adequate body coverage appropriate for a professional workplace.
Why did he look at you, Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, why'd you look at me, Monty?
Consistent footwear. So in other words, if you're wearing a suit, you probably shouldn't have tennis shoes on, stuff like that. And if you're working in the field, it's good to have county logos so you're identified. I had noticed in those, I remember it was last week, a person from the assessor's office was going to go out in the field to do some, you know, assessing work in the field. And I was so pleased to see that they had a vest on which said, you know, Benton County on the back and the logo on the front and their ID. Because it's, you know, if you're just walking around someone's house and you're wearing plain clothes, they don't know who you are. So that was really, I was very pleased to see the person was clearly identified as a county employee. That's a safety issue.
Sure.
So the next step again, if you're inclined to adopt this, as departments then could adopt their own unique dress code policies that comply with the overall policy, but again, reflecting those special conditions in those departments. And this was again endorsed by the management team.
Mr. Chair, so Monty, going back to the vests, so does that mean the highway department has to have Benton County on their vests?
I don't know what they have now.
We don't, currently we don't have any logo.
You got safety vests, right?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Well, I guess it's something they could decide and work on if they need to have identification on their, on their vests.
So Chris, we don't supply them with like a work shirt that says Benton County?
Yeah, so we provide safety vests for them.
Yeah.
And they're just generic. We just buy ANC Class Two vests that don't have a logo or anything on them. And then, then per their union contract, they get a safety clothing allowance at the beginning of every year. And that's just given to them directly, some amount of money. But there's very little restrictions on that. So a lot of times though, they'll buy a winter coat that's reflective. But once again, we don't stipulate where they buy that or if it has to have a logo on it.
I guess if you think about highway, obviously, you know, they're, they're working on a roadside as a crew. They're readily identified as an employee. But the example I gave you was an assessor person going out by themselves to, you know, inspect properties. A little different there, not readily identified necessarily as a county employee, so.
Right, and all of our equipment is identified.
It's almost by definition, they're a highway crew, right, yeah.
That's true.
And they're not going up to someone's house, knocking on the door to do an inspection, right, yeah.
Okay, well, what the board wants to do.
Something to think about, Chris.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt the revisions to the county personnel policies. Chapter twenty-one with a new dress code policy is recommended by the management team.
I'll second that. We got a motion and a second. I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay. Review county board policy or?
There's nothing in your packet, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I did not have this prepared in time for the board packet, so I have it up on the screen for you. And I thought my, here we are, July 2nd. Might be time for a quick review of, of the board's goal discussion from January. So what I have up here in bullet points is the topics that were discussed. And then if there was any consensus from the board, and then what is the status of that issue? So in no particular order, the board talked about ARPA funds. And if I recall at the time, there was an emphasis on putting those resources towards single-family lots, potentially for housing projects. The status, well, we've got agreements now in place with Stock Rapids, Sartell, Foley, Rice and Gilman for various projects. And I know you're going to have some discussions soon about the remaining balance of ARPA funds and potentially some for the city of St. Cloud for their apartment renovations. So that's kind of where that one's at. Emergency manager organizational structure, the board wanted to move emergency manager back under the board and that has of course occurred, that happened January 6th. On employee engagement, the board said at the time, hey, we support what you're doing regarding employee engagement, working with employee strategies. So if you may have seen the email I sent out, our, our first leadership cohort of seventeen supervisors will begin their training on August 7th. It's going to be three half-day sessions with Andy Zemning from Employee Strategies. Commissioner Schlongen, I believe you had a question about that.
Yeah.
This training is for our supervisors.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for your question. And the culture team will also kick off that same day in the afternoon. We're still assembling the roster for our culture team. I've got quite a large number of volunteers, so that's a good sign. The benefits advisory committee is working on benefits recommendations for you all. Hopefully you'll see something this summer. We rewrote the remote work policy. We're calling it now telework. So just as a recap, as a result of the employee engagement project, we decided to focus on four areas. Leadership training, culture team, benefits and the telework policy. So those are the big four that we've been focusing on. So again, it's good to see this, this training and culture team will kick off here again August 7th. So hopeful that produces some great results. Next, jail staffing, the board want to talk about, you know, inmate populations are down. Where was that going? But you met with Sheriff Heck and Committee of the Whole on February 6th and you heard a presentation on issues associated with closing the jail. And there was a consensus, you raised the boarding fee and that has since been done. I believe it was in the fifty-dollar range. And now it was increased to eighty in March. So that was one outcome from that discussion on jail staffing. Next on comp time, overtime, the board said it wanted monthly reports on overtime work and balances. And we needed to stress that OT and comp time must be pre-approved. So you may recall, we brought all the departments into March 5th to explain how they approve comp time. I think that was a good exercise to bring those folks in. You heard kind of unique circumstances in each department of what's going on with overtime and comp time. We gave you this ginormous stack of paper, which didn't prove very workable. So Brent, our very talented applications data services manager, has been working on reports. He takes this data out of payment and we're going to try and create more useful reports for you all from that mass amount of jumbled data that comes out of payment. So we'll do our best. As we've noted, it's a very antiquated system. Their reporting capabilities are very limited. They're, they're very limited. So he's, he takes all that data and uses his Power BI system to produce better reports. So we'll, at some point, we're going to start giving you those. The other, other area of topic was Government Center Project. The board wanted to have some employee forums and you did that back in February. We had four sessions, you brought in GLT and Cittagerty. I think those went well, had those employee sessions, so that, that objective was fulfilled. You talked about all the committees of the whole employee forums that we, that we do have. You decided to keep having employee forums, human services cows if needed. And you also want to try and schedule cows on the off Tuesday. I'm not sure we've been completely successful there, but we're trying. One thing that was brought up was, there was, I, I heard there was a desire amongst the board to have an occasional interaction with the sheriff's office, county attorney, auditor treasurer. And, and we haven't done that yet. So I guess that's an area where I guess some follow-up is needed on my part and some thoughts from you all is, you know, do you want to have some, some opportunities for more interaction? Especially, you know, with the criminal justice, law enforcement side of the road. So we have not done those yet. And the last thing was the board decided to keep the way we do employee recognition for years of service, where you all kind of go around and, and you meet with folks in their departments, so. No changes there. So Mr. Chair, those were the, the topics the board discussed during goal session back in January. I believe I covered all the points I wanted to.
Any thoughts, questions, comments?
I think back in regards to your comment about the other elected officials, my, my thinking was maybe, and I'm just throwing this out there, quarterly, a five-minute update at our board meeting. And then from there, we may need to establish a cow instead of establishing cows with them that we may not need.
Sure.
That makes sense? And I don't know if quarterly is the right number, I just throw that out there, but.
Yeah.
We see the sheriff now and then, you know.
Right.
Really see the county.
Yeah.
Treasurer when needed, but.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of nice for just some updates from there.
I hear you, okay. Well, I will send that message to those folks and, and see if I can help send reminders on that.
Just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Johnson said, my idea of, of it would be, you know, it, they hear a lot of things that are going on in the county. And it would be good to get all elected officials together in a cow just to brainstorm on what we could all be doing better. You know, it, maybe it's, maybe it's not one thing, maybe they're hearing something that's going on over here.
And it's obviously nice for all parties not to be surprised.
Exactly. I don't think it's something that we got to have three hours to talk about. It's come together for forty-five minutes, an hour and just, you know, make sure everything's all on the up and up and everybody's kind of pulling the rope versus pushing it.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I agree. It's better off to get ahead of the situations that are coming forth versus having them come in immediately and say, we got a crisis now.
Right.
We'd like to know ahead of time what's happening.
Now there's a knee-jerk reaction.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Like the six potential added positions.
Exactly.
That's just, I was thinking, right, as, as I went back to my jail staffing, right, you're going to hear about that. I believe after your next board meeting, where Sheriff Heck and I believe Charlene will be here to discuss the DOC licensing issue, right, you know. So that's just, Mr. Chair, just kind of a quick review of goals at midpoint of the year.
Okay. I think it's a very, we've covered a lot of things on our goals already.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of things in, a lot of things in the works too.
Okay. Perfect. You good, Monty?
I'm good.
If you are, then we'll move on to Chris.
Tell him he's got seven minutes.
Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners.
You got six minutes, thirty-eight seconds. Just kidding. I can go pretty quickly.
He's going for the record at nine-thirty this month.
And that was nudged by Commissioner Johnson.
Well, we do have ditch meeting, so that'll blow that record out. Well, thank you for adding me to the agenda. I did feel like it was important to provide an update on our construction projects. Start off with some good news. We got our CASA seven reconstruction project advertised as of yesterday. So we're out for bids right now. We don't have our core of engineer permit just yet, but we did get, receive, we did receive approval to advertise. So we have a bid opening of July 26th. We'll be bringing those bids as soon as we can to the next board meeting to you. And then hopefully get some work done. Now that we're so late in the year, we know that we're not going to get all of it reconstructed. So we wrote into the bidding specs that anything that the contractor opens up, they have to get at least six inches of gravel before November 1st this year. So we have a, a driving surface over the winter. We know we're not going to have paving done this, this fall. We also put limitations on there that they can't open up more than three miles of the five-mile project. So we're kind of putting it in the bidder's hands. What do they think that they can accomplish? But anything that they rip pavement off, we want it graded and gravel based on it before the winter. But in no case, we don't want them ripping up the whole length of the project, so. As far as the core engineer's permit status, they've received everything that they have. Their process, because we're getting an individual permit, it's out for a fourteen-day comment period right now. So barring any comments back from public or interested groups, we foresee we should have that permit in hand by the time we open bids. So and don't foresee any like additional requirements on contractors or anything like, like that, so. Good news, we're happy to finally be here. We meet all of our federal requirements for the federal fiscal year. We got authorization for those funds in the 2024 state fiscal year, which ended June 30th. So we meet all those requirements. And let's just hope and pray for good, good bid numbers later this month.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask you, Chris, what's your gut tell you about the bidding environment out there?
Uh, it's mixed. It seems like the contractors that got work, got a lot of work. But then there's a lot of contractors that didn't pick up hardly any work. So we do know some local contractors knew that this project was coming and have held off on picking up other work because they wanted to work close to home. So we're hoping that that works in our favor. The big thing will be next spring, what are oil prices? By letting it now, hopefully those paving contractors will know our paving quantities that will be paved in 2025. They can lock in some commodity prices still yet this fall. And then hopefully we avoid any inflationary costs of oil over the winter and next spring. But if for some reason next spring oil prices crash, then maybe we won't look so smart. But I don't know, we, we'll, we'll just see. So I do know that there's contractors in our area that are still looking for work and hopefully we can get them some work this, this fall and that works to our favor. All right, so that's CASA seven. CASA twenty-nine, we're still working with Excel Energy on their utility conflicts. They, since we've last spoke about this, they did provide some additional options for us. So we do have two more options that we are evaluating with, with lower costs. These costs are, basically they're using wooden poles kind of in the same location as the existing ones, but they do require additional guy wires and those kinds of things. So one proposal, this proposal two, once again, cuts it diagonally, avoids this conflict in, in the corner. Wooden poles, what they call lamppoles, which is a bunch of wooden planks laminated together. This proposal is about eight hundred thousand dollars, so a little bit less than, than what we were seeing at nine-thirty-five. We are evaluating, if I can zoom in a little bit. This view shows their guy wires coming off of them. Those don't exist today on these poles. So these extend farther than what this picture allows. I mean, these are fifty to seventy-five feet out laterally from the base of the pole. And then they go into the ground into some ground anchors. So now we're evaluating, are those guy anchors going to be in conflict with the underground storm sewer or any of the other utilities that are underground at that location? And then there is a proposal three, which is moving this pole that's at the corner just farther north. This, this has some additional conflicts though. That is seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, so seventeen thousand dollars less than the, the second proposal. But we still may have some conflicts here with this, this pole. So we're evaluating that with our consultant. Yeah, we're kind of going back and forth. We did send them a check for the engineering, the hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that was in that scoping estimate. So they should have the impetus to continue moving forward on their design. They're still looking for direction from us on which way to go. That's, that's kind of atypical for us on road construction projects. What happens most of the time is we'll come up with a road design and we'll identify conflicts or even just potential conflicts. And we will send those to the utility owner and say, utility owner, here's where our conflicts are. We want you to relocate. And then leave that up to them to, to come up with their best design to avoid those conflicts. This is a little bit unique because now they're throwing it back at us and say, okay, you tell us how to design this to avoid your conflicts. Which, as you can imagine, that accepts some liability and ownership if things go wrong. So that's where we're trying to tread lightly, cover all of our bases, cross all of our Ts, dot all of our Is. So if we tell them, okay, boom, we want you to follow this, this design, and then we still have issues later, we know that that's going to come back on us and say, you know, Excel's just going to say, well, you told us how to design it that way. So we're proceeding with caution. I think it is optimistic, I mean, or hopeful and, and good that we did see some lower costs. Now, to combat those costs, I've still been working with Amanda O'Thodde at the BEP. And just last week, she has identified another grant opportunity that she believes and with her contacts, we would be. Uh, we would be a good candidate for. This is through the Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED, they have. Identified an energy transition grant. Um, I was not aware of this, but there was an electrical generating plant that owned by Excel. That was decommissioned in twenty nineteen in Benton County, within the city limits of Saint Cloud, so. Kind of behind Waste Management, uh, Kramer Storage has back there. There was a peak generating plant in there that was decommissioned in twenty nineteen. And because that decommissioning occurred, that makes us eligible for this grant. Uh, grant proceeds are up to one million dollars, and so we plan on asking for a million dollars for our project. So I'm I'm providing some, working on that, providing some language and uh construction costs and estimates to Amanda uh to apply for it. Since it, that plant did exist within the city limits of Saint Cloud. We do need to go to the city of Saint Cloud to get a resolution of support from them. A- and that's where, nothing's a slam dunk, because uh. Amanda knows, she's been talking to some folks that she knows at the city of Saint Cloud, they had another project that they were. Hoping to use or apply for this grant for as well, so. We don't know if there's a limit to, you know, per region or per city, how many times you can receive this grant, um, just. What we've heard through DED, through Amanda, that our project sounded like the exact kind of project that they they would like to to fund with this. This grant. They wanna see it going towards towards infrastructure.
The city of Saint Cloud isn't shovel ready either.
Correct, that's the big thing. We're ready to go next year, and we're hoping that that, you know, is in our favor, that you give us the money, we're gonna put it to work. But according to the grant documents, since it's in the city limits of Saint Cloud, we need a resolution from Saint Cloud. Don't necessarily need a resolution from the county board, but need one from the city of Saint Cloud, so we're planning on going. Uh, to a Saint, you know, cl- uh, council meeting either in July or the first one in August and asking for that that resolution, so.
Amanda was gonna get us some information. She thought that the grant would be ready, or the resolution would be ready to. Go in front of Saint Cloud before our next APO meeting, so then I can have Mayor Kleis and 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 uh Jake Anderson. There and propose it to them guys first.
Mr. Chair, Chris, can you explain to me why all of a sudden they are willing to put in wooden poles? Versus the first concept, they were not gonna be wooden poles?
Well, I think uh our first discussions were kind of that approach, is like, you're in conflict. Get them out of our way, and so their first reaction was, okay, to eliminate this pole, we need to put. I mean, without doing much analysis, their first reaction was steel poles on concrete foundations, that's the most clear. And and things that, you know, from their standpoint, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt here. That's the way that they could assure that they're going to be clear of any potential conflicts. So now that we've kind of pushed back and said. Okay, let's explore some other options, some lower cost options. There's still um. Potential for some conflicts and things still need to be moved and shifted on our side and their side. Uh, they're willing to maybe come and compromise a a little bit, so. One thing, maybe to our benefit, though, that that maybe these makes materials more readily available, um, less design intensive, so. You know, if they don't use that full hundred thirty-four thousand of engineering, it can go towards the construction or materials costs, so. I I don't know the exact answer, Commissioner, I'm just speculating that that may be why their first reaction was just to get. The most clear, most out of the way was boom, steel and concrete, that's the most expensive option, so.
Yeah, what's your theory, Commissioner?
My theory is, is they got, they usually don't get pushback. And they got a lot of pushback on this one, and I still think seven hundred thousand and a hundred and thirty-four thousand for engineering is a lot of money. Now they're going to wooden poles. And they decreased it by a hundred grand.
Yeah, so the first proposal number two was eight hundred thousand dollars, so that's that's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand less than what we first heard. And then this third proposal, you know, seven hundred and uh eighty-seven thousand, or seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. A little bit less yet, but.
Yeah, I, when, how far are we planning on going with the four lane for um County Road one?
It ends at twenty-nine there.
Yeah, so the four-lane section of the Nuthy fighting, the Mayhew Lake Road Study would end at this intersection, so we're, that's part of the, you know, issue and two. We're making the circle large enough to accommodate uh two lanes northbound and two lanes southbound. In in as it comes out of that roundabout circle, so. So what, when we construct it, you'll see pavement width. For two lanes, but we're going to stripe it day one of opening for only a single lane roundabout, so. It doesn't confuse drivers and and those kinds of things, so.
I have another question, too. Just thinking about who. Who is it originally here and had the property? And does the county, are county roads preceding electrical lines? Or like, who's got the authority here and who sh- what should the sheriff be with the authority is my question.
I think he's explained to us before that. Excel had the easement before the county did.
Yeah, we got it on the roundabout on.
No, I I I mean, historically, have our roads been here before? Or were we, did we have power lines before we had roads?
It doesn't go by that, Commissioner, it goes by who applies for the easements and.
Buys the property. And in this case, Excel had it before the county did.
Yeah, on County Road three, on that roundabout, we had it before Excel did.
Yeah, maybe to to answer the question, our road, the road path, the road surface probably existed before the transition. Transmission lines, but they put in transmission lines within months before the county acquired additional width. To to reconstruct that road and make it wider, and then therefore, um, think think of. Easements and property ownership is like a cake. You've got a title at the bottom, and then sometimes you get easement stacked on top of each other. And whoever's at the bottom probably has the most authority, and the fact that Excel Energy in this location has an easement. Below our road easement that forces us to bear the costs of relocating it. If it was the other way around. We had the easement first and we either allowed them by permit, or they tried to get an easement on top of our existing public road easement. It would be entirely different conversation, um, but. I don't know the facts exactly, but I can imagine back, this was nineteen eighty-one is when these easements were recorded. These conversations were happening with landowners, probably, yeah, within months of each other or at the same time, and Excel was just able. Probably even at that time, it was, you know, NSP, Northern State's Power, they probably had deeper pockets in the county. And that's how a lot of times they work. They don't, you don't hear a lot of NSP going to condemnation court like a county or a state or even a city would. They probably had the resources to throw change or money at the landowners just to get the easement recorded, where the county probably didn't have that. It would have to go through the steps of condemnation, um, and that delays the process as well.
And even back then, the the easements that were there, we weren't even thinking about a four-lane highway going through there, so their easements were. Right in to where we wanna build our four lane, that's why.
Forty years ago, so. Yeah, it's not like this on on every project, but.
What are eminent domain rules? Who who's got the authority for the eminent domain?
Yeah, that's a, that is something we're actually having discussions um a- as well, because. This proposal would require additional easement uh overhead, utility easement on on this this parcel. So do we acquire that easement as additional road? Your public road easement, and then allow them to be in that by permit in our road easement? Excel would want the, they want the county to acquire easements for them. And our attorney's office is saying, no, no, if we acquire any easement, it's it's in our name and it's our easement, then we'll let you buy permit. Or if they'll, the other situation would be Excel, they have. Real estate people that work for them, they go out and acquire an easement in Excel's name uh across that that parcel. Yeah, I I I, and to, when it comes to those kind of lines, you probably are familiar with the CapEx project, you know, several years ago. That went through the courts, and I think case law kind of changed how things were done at that time, so I I I don't even know. All those details. But I think that's generally, we are a condemning authority and we have the the right to condemn for our purposes, not for other other purposes. Before we leave this project, I do just want to give you an update. One of the things in our design that we're working on. When we construct this, we're gonna completely, we're gonna have to completely shut down that intersection, and we need to provide access. To the residents in the villages of Creekside neighborhood. So we're looking at building, um, I've been calling it a detour road, but basically it's just an access road. We we looked at uh three different options here. Excuse me, and I think my preferred option is this this option one. What we would do is we would use an existing uh entrance or the existing driveway that's already constructed. And then anything you see in red would be new earthwork quantities, um, and then tie it into Thirty-Fifth Street, which is our future County Road twenty-nine. At this location, um, try to split the difference between two houses, so we don't have at night, we don't have. Drivers and headlights shining right into bedroom windows and things like that. When you compare it to the other two options. Uh, it does appear that if we need to think of red, this probably has the least amount of new grading, therefore the lowest costs we we anticipate. Um, so we have a curve that we need to design in here. We're probably going to be at, we're gonna pave this. Uh, twenty-two feet wide of pavement, so not as wide as a, you know, county highway, which is a minimum of twenty-four foot driving. Lanes, probably go to twenty-two feet a- and build it, understanding that it's gonna be temporary. Um, it's just gonna be for a summer of construction. Uh, but this is gonna require some discussions with the landowner and probably purchasing a temporary easement to build this. Um, and and build this this connection. This new, as we've talked about in the past, this new County Road twenty-nine alignment shifts in this direction to the northwest. And moves away from these houses, so this will, this will come out eventually anyways, as the new twenty-nine is aligned. Kind of more up in this this area, but since the roundabout's gonna occur first, we need to provide. Access to those residents to be able to get in and out, and then a detour route will use our Kasaw one to our Kasaw fifteen. To fifty-eight and then back down to Golden Spike Road, our Kasaw three to back around, so.
Mr. Chair, is the Stolman entrance, that's private, right?
That is private, yeah.
So you'll have to get his approval to.
Yeah, um, fortunately for us, uh, several years ago, I don't have a good image of that. We did approve an additional driveway entrance for him that's closer to his house. To the east here, and he has a direct connection onto Thirty-Fifth Street east of this location, so it could be one of those things that. His driveway is blocked here, so we don't have vehicles going straight towards his house. We we block it off and force them back down to Thirty-Fifth Street. Um, for him, though, he will be also probably forced to use Thirty-Fifth Street to get to his his access into his home east of here.
Mr. Chair, Chris, in this particular situation, does do the, does the pavement stay then when you're done? That part of the.
I think that would be part of the the negotiation process. If that helps sweeten the deal for him, we can, we can leave that um permanently for him, so. Uh, to this point that we, you know, that we can construct it. A- a- and those are things that come out in negotiations, you know, some of the things have happened in the past on other projects, you know, paving driveways and stuff, so. We don't always like to to do that as part of our project. We like to get to a dollar amount. We've run into too many times when we try to construct as part of our project. Um, having difficulty meeting their standards, so uh sometimes if we can get to a dollar amount they agree to. Then they can go hire their own contractor and and have it built to to their standards, so. Uh, but yeah, so that's something that we're working on, and once again, that. It it may, you know, be heard that this is kind of an expensive roundabout, but these are the kind of things that kind of lead to that that expense, so. But I did wanna provide those updates for seven and twenty-nine uh today, and that's that's all I had unless there was other question.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Alright, before we do the ditching, I think we'll go right into meeting updates and stuff. Who would like to start? I can start if you want. Okay, I'll uh, I I covered the BEP meeting. That was the main one. Um, I just wanna put a shout out to Amanda, Pam, and that whole BEP. It is insane on what they're doing, and the the projects they got in the works a- and and looking for all these grants. Uh, you know, a million dollars on a grant, if we could somehow secure that is insane, and there was nothing that, I mean, it was. That's what they search for, and these grants are so time-consuming. And we gotta be careful that we're not wearing these people out, because they uh they've got a lot on their plates, um, so.
I I'd agree, and I'd add to that all the BRE visits, too. I mean, I've been a handful of them already, just here in this district, let alone what else is going on.
On the BRE, I think they're trying to catch up from what couldn't get done. But it, you know, like, the one, I attended the one up by Royalton, and all of a sudden, now she created a meeting with the Voltech School. Because this guy needs to train somebody, and the Voltech School is interested in training somebody to, you know, do the emergency cars. So there's another connection. I mean, sometimes we do the BRE visit, and that creates another meeting or another job for them, and I mean. And it ain't like, like, he brought it up. It was Amanda that brought it up, and we'll check into it and maybe we can get this. And ten days later, they're having a meeting.
It's her connections to the state on all these different opportunities is is in invaluable. It's it's insane. Everybody, there's so many times people, people judge people by what they do and, you know, no business came in or something like that. Their extensions of their services to this county are are substantial on everything. So I just, they need a real shout out. The whole board needs a real shout out. Uh, you guys are all doing a great job over there.
We got some good, good business people on there that really helps, you know.
That's all I have. Obviously, we had the cows and stuff, but.
Yep, I had the cows and all that, too, of course, and then I just wanted to give a shout out to Victoria Blonigan for. Joining me at the WJLN radio station. That went very well. That went very well. That's all I had.
I was on the AMC um tax forfeiture um update. It would be interesting, I I think we should have uh something with Roxanne, because it's really complicated what they're doing and. Just get an update so you guys can understand it better, or if you've been involved with digging into what they're doing. Yeah, but they they settled, and they've got all different laws to follow now and for properties. How the funds go, they deals with mineral rights and everything else.
Monty, how how have we been on tax forfeiture? We haven't had a huge.
You know, this interesting question, uh, we've not had an an auction of tax forfeit properties for years. And I I think fortunately, we don't have a lot, which is a good thing, because I can, you know, in twenty-two years I've been here, almost. I can recall two houses going into tax forfeiture, uh, so it's not common for us. Oftentimes what happens, it might be like a an unbillable outlot goes tax for it, because you can't do anything with it, so just. It goes tax forfeit, so it's it's usual that what goes tax forfeit is usually very undesirable. Little parcel, odd parcels. I think, you know, the issue of concern, you know, that resulted in that legislation was. A lot of the big urban counties that have lots of houses going into tax forfeiture, or potentially. Large tracts of forest land up north going into tax forfeiture. It just hasn't been a huge issue with us. But it's definitely worth an update, though, to kind of see what's going on with that, how we sell and prop, what do we have in inventory? Um, is it's it's been quite some time since, because it used to be the Auto Treasury would bring to you like the listing of, you know. Of all fifteen properties, the board would set the minimum price, and then they would be available for. Of all fifteen properties, the board would set the minimum price, and then they would be available for auction. Um, but again, that hasn't occurred in quite a long time. Again, I think probably one reason is we just don't have a lot of tax forfeited properties.
How is that different than the property we sold over by the airport a year or two ago?
To Dave Miller.
You could sell that piece over on County, is that County eight? South of the, south of Rock.
What do we sell that for? You'll have to remind me.
What did we sell it for? I don't remember.
What purpose?
It was like locked or whatever, and he wanted to purchase it. He was actually was using it, I think.
You, it was next door to.
Next door to his, yeah.
Okay, is that county owned?
It was county owned.
Oh, county owned, okay, there's a difference.
Because all all state used, was right next to the owner. And we had the same thing, there was a lot right between our property and the road.
Yeah, well, there's a difference.
But let me, let me ask Christine if she can do an update for you on just the the inventory, what's currently in tax forfeiture. And if she wants to update you on how the new law might affect, might affect us. Sure, I'll ask her to do that.
They're saying like the minimum bid that they can go with is at the taxes says value.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Go from there.
One, the one thing that we've heard at the AMC was that, you know, they found a supposedly helium deal in Lake County. Well, Lake County's got a lot of tax forfeited land because it was forest land that was worthless, so people just let it go back. And now they may come back and say, that's why there's that fifteen-year look-back window. Cause they could come back and say, huh huh, that was my property, you know, but you didn't pay the taxes, so. And then we get anything that's above and beyond the taxes. So I, you know, there's, it it was designed, that that bill was designed for, you know. Hennepin County, Ramsey County, and then the county's way up.
And it does have the county's expenses fixed.
Yeah, fortunately, we've, we've had very modest expenses associated with this this property. I remember like the two houses, we had like, I think, put, you know, chains of locks. Um, but they sold very quickly to people who wanted to, cause they had been just trashed when they were abandoned. And they were sold really quickly, and people then renovated them, so they didn't stay on our inventory very long, yeah.
I got just two things. We had the library finance committee meeting that went really well. Um, we had proposals, we were a little short on voting members, we barely had a quorum, and uh. Uh, shout out to Commissioner Phobie, cause we had three options, and I liked the third option, and. She told the Wright County Commissioner, if Commissioner Pop likes the third count, third option, you better make a motion now, and she did. So it'll result in what, I haven't got the official papers, but it's gonna result in probably like eleven thousand dollar. Decrease in our library deal.
Take it.
So, yeah, we'll take it, and everybody's gonna be pretty minimal, but. Uh, Wright County's gonna have an increase, and you know, Morrison County and Todd County weren't there, and with the one we had proposed, they were gonna have an increase, and. Um, they just said, well, you know, we're happy if we can get it back to zero, and so they actually got a decrease out of it. And then the other one was last night, we had a park commission meeting, and we agreed to expend. The remaining funds that we have left, cause we were at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And so they're going to do uh, oh, there's a requirement for the structure, where they showed us that. How much more concrete we had to put in for this building, it was like insane, it came to twenty-two thousand dollars more concrete. In order to get this building that they're gonna put up secured because of requirements. And then they're going to, we're gonna put in a new well, and they're working on that. And then instead of adding class five, we're gonna add class two only on the east side, and that'll about chew up our hundred and eighty-five thousand that we had. So, but you know, them are things that wouldn't have got done without. So, and they're gonna, I talked to Jeff, and he's gonna work on the well, because they got a complete new well with a new pump, and I don't. That well does not pump that much water, that we should put a new pump in there, so he's gonna work on that with it too.
I was out of state last week, but I did have a meeting yesterday, uh, Tri-County Solid Waste, myself, Vice Chair Danny Olowski from Sherburne. SWO's, um, just reviewing some contract stuff for Tri-County, and also moving forward with what our potential Plan Bs are, so. There's a lot in the works, a lot, a lot of things are changing over there, and so there'll be more and more updates coming, hopefully this summer.
I was really bummed that they canceled.
I I'll bet you were.
Well, I'll take a motion to adjourns, cause there is no committees of the whole, right?
We've got several.
What month?
Several, he says.
What month, though?
It's time for the uh, first half of the year employee service awards. Uh, those are usually held in the morning before a board meeting. So we wanted to offer you two possibilities. Tuesday, July sixteenth, board meeting at seven AM. Or the August sixth board meeting at also seven AM. Which which would you prefer? July sixteenth or August, August sixth?
To me, we have a cow both days. Let's get her done in sixty.
I'm fine with that.
July sixteen, okay, then we'd start at seven AM over the sheriff's office. There. Probably, is anyone in the highway this time? We'll look, okay, yeah. Alright, Mr. Chair, then the the last one is is three topics that landed on my list. Uh, some continued discussions on the use of ARPA funds. I think we need some resolution on the City of Saint Cloud request. And other uncommitted ARPA funds. I also understand there's some desire to be, to resume some discussions about the Government Center project. Also, Roxanne and Brian wish to discuss with you assessor staffing, giving. Uh, the departures of some local folks from that profession. So, um, three topics, ARPA, Government Center and Government and County Assessor Staff for a cow.
Next Tuesday, the ninth?
Um, we do, we, we could, we could go in the morning, we have human, we have HR director interviews in the afternoon.
Yep, I've got two meetings in the afternoon too, on Tuesday. Actually, that would work in the morning for me, that way I could just stay in town here.
Ninth works for me.
Can make it work.
What time would you like to start?
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, yeah.
Um, s- some feedback I was hearing is that this discussion on the Government Center would not. Include GLT or integrity, is that, is that accurate?
I would think I don't.
I would, yeah.
I would think we need to get our heads wrapped around it again.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so then ARPA, Government Center, County Assessor, eight thirty on the ninth, and that is all we have.
Okay, who for approval of the cows?
Okay, we got a motion, a second for approval of the cows, all in favor? Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Motion to.
You adjourn it.
Adjourn at nine fifty-eight.
Hey, pretty good.
Mr. Chair, that's pretty close.
That's pretty close.
You know, under an hour.
I'm sorry, guys. We got out of control there with this.
Alright, we're gonna, whoop, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, are you done?
Nope, I'm done.
We are gonna move into ditch authority, I'll call that to order. We have had a roll call already. Move into approval or amendments to our agenda. Anything to add, Chris?
I have nothing to.
For approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose is carried, move on to contend agenda item one, approve or amend the meeting minutes of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second to approve those minutes, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor? Pose is carried. Chris, County Ditch nine, repair report, change order possibility.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring you to the drainage authority to consider authorizing a change order to our contractor Hellman, uh, to address. Uh, the rocks on the spoil piles. Specifically on the held properties, it's on County Ditch nine. So, working with our consultant, he and I went out there and we we came up with uh, three different options. Uh, to do it. The first option was to go through there and remove some of that spoil piles.
Chris, could I interrupt you there before you start on that? Would you be willing to pull it up on Beacon, please, and show us where we're talking about? I think that'd be helpful to the other three commissioners who maybe haven't seen it.
Have you been out there, Chair?
I think, I I think you showed it to me that one time.
Okay, just to refresh our memory, sorry, but might be helpful to see it.
This is a picture I took uh, last week or the week before, so this is a hundred and seventy-fifth street, the culvert's underneath of it. Um, it's hard to tell, we have a lot of vegetation growing up there, but. I don't know, you can kinda see some, there's some large boulder type uh, rocks that have come out of there. Um, you could not drive across this with with a mower. Part of the, this, the situation was exacerbated also by the the depth of excavation through this this point. Um, so there's a lot of spoil materials in here, but you also see some mature trees that are kinda back at. And these were about twenty-five feet from the ditch, where a buffer strip was typically sixteen and a half feet. We identified additional area just to give contractor some room, so so that com- complicates things there. So the contractor was trying to fit the spoil pile in between the edge of the top of the bank and the back of the trees that. That they were given permission to to remove, and if we bring it up on Beacon, hopefully this layer is. Open. There you go, yeah, it works. So yeah, this is where ditch nine comes and crosses under a hundred and seventy-fifth street, so. We're lo- where we're, the picture is standing on a hundred and seventy-fifth street here and looking downstream. Is where we're at. We'll go back to the picture. So that was one option, was to just haul out some of this spoil pile. Uh, the second option was to try and spread it out around the trees a little bit. Um, and then the third option that was presented was to cut down trees and then spread it out further. And then if you recall on our road tour, eh, we talked about it some more. And we mentioned that we're we're seeing some erosion, since we've had a lot of flows through this now that we've opened it up, and a lot of flows before we had vegetation reestablished. Could we somehow screen some of that oversized rock and then place it on the project in locations just to to combat some erosion, so. That was also discussed with the contractor as well, so you see the the um, prices here, and I spoke out of order, but. To haul out the spoils and that soil and the rock, that was the most expensive option to the contractor at eighteen thousand. To remove the trees and to spread out the spoil piles in a wider area, that was fifteen thousand dollars, and then try to work it around the trees. Um, the the lowest cost option there, ten thousand dollars, although. Uh, they cautioned us that working around those trees may still, you know, if we don't cut them down, may still result in them them dying. If we're covering up the roots and and disturbing them. And then the th- that that the additional option with uh, bringing out what what's called a grizzly, basically it's just a large screen. That you would dump the spoil piles over, let the smaller soils fall through, and then the larger rocks roll off. Um, having an excavator and then a truck skid loader out there and a dozer. He couldn't come up with how long that would take, and then so is offering an hourly price uh, to do that.
Commissioner Pop, you have a question?
Yeah, on the, on leveling it out around there, and you look at, we're we're just looking at the rocks that we see. I'm worried about there's big rocks under the soil, I mean, the big rock's gonna have to be removed anyway. Unless, I mean, we can't use that many of them down along the, the culverts coming out of there, I don't think.
Yeah, there may be, you're right, there may be more than what we could actually use at that location, um.
And if we're gonna remove the trees, then we have to have the property.
That, that's the other consideration, we don't necessarily have that that approval yet to take down some additional trees. I recall some meetings last fall where, uh, with that landowner, they expressed that they did not wanna see more trees removed, so.
I mean, so if you look at fifteen thousand versus eighteen thousand, and then you still gotta haul out rock. Don't look like a real good option.
Chris, does this include the big rock pile down on the left-hand side, the south side of where it curves, you know, the. The pile of rock that was identified?
Uh, I I honestly, I do not believe so. I believe it's just that one where they excavated out of the channel and and threw it up there on the the spoil pile.
Okay, so I'm gonna share with the ditch authority again, my opinion on this. We will not be able to maintain this sixteen and a half feet with the way that it is. Right, so, again, if we're gonna do repairs and not maintain them, I think we're foolish. So, I think we have to figure out how to, this is a unique situation, in this particular property owner where that spoil pile, what? Chris, six, eight feet tall?
Yeah.
So any rock that are on there have rolled down into his property. Which, of course, he's not very happy about, and I don't blame him. And the rock that exists down on the other side, and we've had this discussion. In my opinion, I don't believe it's the property owner's fault, I don't believe really it's anybody's fault, again, I I kinda said it before. It could have been great-great-grandpa Pop that put that rock there a hundred years ago. So, but what do we do? Do we turn our head and go, eh, or do we take care of it now that we're doing?
We fix it the right way.
Well, that's my opinion, and it's gonna cost some money, and it's gonna get spread amongst the whole ditch system. I don't believe it's this particular property owner's problem, I think it's the ditch's problem, and I think we've gotta set ourselves up to be able to maintain it. Yes, it's gonna cost money.
And and it's, in my opinion, it's gonna be pretty hard, if we got a few rocks there now. And the property owner adds more rocks, we gonna come back and say, oh, you can't do that, you know, we ain't gonna know if he adds rocks.
Well, if we clean it up now, establish our buffers, we know.
We know.
So, Mr. Chair, please fill me in about this rock pile.
Well, down on the left-hand side.
Did we create that rock pile, or was it created?
We don't, we, it was there, and I don't think anybody knew it until they went to the repair. So who, again, who put it there?
Who put it there, we don't know.
Did we put it there?
No, no.
Okay, I'll just give you my opinion. If we didn't put it there, somebody did, and it was probably the landowner that did it. I'm not s- I don't know.
Yeah, that way down on the left side, you can't see it.
Yeah, it's down.
It's kinda down between those, before you get to that wa- that tree right there, and it's kinda right in there.
And it's a pile of rock.
And is it in our sixteen feet?
Yes.
And those trees right there are within the sixteen feet too.
No, no.
No.
No, no trees are in the sixteen feet anymore.
None?
And you're absolutely right, Commissioner Hein, and can I sit here and tell you that the landowner didn't do it? I can't. I don't think that anybody can sit here and tell us he did.
No, I I I realize that, but once you told me it's in our sixteen feet, I'm already done with it.
Meaning?
We gotta take.
Get rid of it.
Yeah, and at this point going forward, if the landowner dumps rock there.
That's on them.
Now we know, and it's on them. They put it into the buffer. I I just, if we're gonna be serious about having buffer strips and maintaining ditches. I think we have to correct it, and I understand Chris's point completely, and and I commend him for it. It costs money to do this.
One concern I have is that becomes, you know, our kind of our policy. What we see on future ditches, landowners start to put things that they don't want anymore in that buffer area, cause they know that the project's gonna come through a- and remove that.
Well, then maybe what we do at this point, since we have drones, is we fly over our.
Yeah, every ditch.
Every ditch and pre-record before the repairs start, and then when things start showing up.
We know.
Then I I have no issue going back to landowner and saying, dude, you put this here prior to our repair. But we don't know that here.
Well, and then if you go, uh, I think it's on this ditch where the person put a new fence up. And specifically, you can see it sixteen feet from the, from the ditch. I mean, so that's the kinda own property owners we like.
Yeah, they prepped for it.
Yeah, yep.
But maybe, and you're, it's a good concern, Chris, but let's take advantage of our technology and fly our ditches. See what's there, you know, if a guy goes and parks his RV out there, cause he doesn't want it anymore.
We should be able to charge that time to the ditch, to the ditches, and here's why. Because in turn, it it should be saving the ditch money in the future by having this this documentation on the front end.
Well, and how about being able to share that with potential contractors on the bidding, so they can really see what's out there?
Sure, that, you know, that would be a goal of mine, is to get that information captured, collected. Drone footage, and then put that out there on our website, so not just bidders, but anybody, so, um.
And we just let people know that, hey, we we did this.
Yeah, but in order to, going back to your comment on charging it to the ditch, then we need a fund. Because we can't have, you know, we we don't wanna have to go back and through the ass- um, the assessor.
Could we not make that part of the repair? These contracts aren't closed.
Correct, a- and back to Commissioner Gupinski's, you know, we have an obligation and a responsibility to inspect. Drone footage and things, that's, that could be part of our inspection, so. You know, twenty percent of our ditch length every year needs to be inspected, or or at least once every five years, all of it needs to be inspected.
Sorry, Chris. We, my deal would be as soon as we have that ditch done and completed, before we get all the vegetation, fly it and document it and then we got it. And then if anything shows up inside that ditch.
When you go park an RV out there, cause you don't want it anymore. Best just let them finish.
But regarding contracts, you're right, the contracts are still open a- and that's one of the things we've discussed uh with Houston or I've discussed is like. If we get authorized in authorization for a change order, we had a completion date um coming up here at the end of July, actually. I believe we need to extend that, because there is still contract work that they need to get done and the way this spring's been. As soon as it would dry out, it would start raining again and and that's part of the original contract, they do need to come back and dress. Up spoil piles generally on the whole length of the ditch, I've been out there with our our new side by side and it is rough riding, it's really difficult to get through there, so. So yeah, we have the contract open, so, so we have multiple options here, um one, two, three. If that's, you know, maybe not what we wanna do, I would recommend if you wanna go with the using the screening option. Uh kinda there at the bottom of their table, maybe authorizing a maximum dollar amount and do using those options. Or using those piece of equipment up to that maximum dollar amount, see how much we can get accomplished, would be my recommendation. But yeah, we're open to what the the board sees is the best option moving forward.
Well, my only concern on this is I I don't know that we have clarity on whether or not that eighteen grand. Yeah, I I think you're leaning towards it's only the spoil and not that rock pile.
The one way down.
The one way down.
Yeah, I I believe when they provided that cost, it was just on the side that they that they had worked from originally, so. While they're there and have equipment, could I, I certainly can ask them to say, well, can you just run a piece of equipment over there and scoop out those. Rocks on the other side.
Johnson, was you down, have you, was you down to that rock?
Yeah, Chris and I last fall went down and saw them.
How big is it?
Fifty feet long or more?
Yeah, maybe, I wouldn't say it's more than that, so, but it's probably about two feet high, so.
So in that, in that rock pile, could those rocks be used? Around around those culverts, sir?
And maybe those are the rock that get used, instead of digging them out of the spoil.
Right, eh maybe that would be my option, if he's gonna have a skid steer out there, could he just take that skid steer and then. Line the bank here around that corner instead of hauling it, you know, take it to a dump truck and then hauling on a dump truck somewhere.
And then the other, and the other side, I just, in my book, get rid of it, get rid of it.
But I will just point out, I mean, just look at the, now that we've had this ditches, look just how rocky this area was, so as you can imagine. Yeah, who put it there, I mean, this is just a rocky area of the county.
And I think we have to be, you know, and I'm sure Luke will do this cognizant of any rock that have rolled onto that property owner's property, we need to do our best to get it off of there.
Yeah, that would.
Thoughts?
Then they're not going to allow the rocks to be buried underneath.
I don't think they looked at that as an option to bury them.
I thought of one of them mentioned.
Well, the biggest problem here is Chris just showed, look how rocky the area is, I think dig down, we're gonna be in rock.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, eh eh to your point, though, I think in in the beginning, that was an option that we briefly discussed and I think what we came back to is like. Well, the natural ground is so rocky there, we dig a hole, the rocks are just gonna be back on top again, so. If they're, if they're gonna be in a an impedance to our maintenance, we probably just need to get them out of there or find a way to use them within the project.
You know, and I think in and it's not a big deal, but part of this particular area in the buffers are part of establishing the buffers to. Spot of getting them maintained, so part of that work in there, a little bit of it's already included. In establishing the buffer and getting it to a point of being able to be maintained, so.
That that's kinda my confusion with the contractor right now, is how can they say that this can be maintained? Knowing that all those rocks are there.
Can't, can't.
So does any of this lie on the contractor for that, you know, it's a tough situation.
When we met with them in the subcommittee and with Joe Lewis, you know, part of Luke's concern too was even farther down the road, when you go back to. Repair or maintain the ditch, where are you gonna put the spoils? You know, but you're right, where's that fine line?
Yeah, we we don't wanna have our contractors backing away from bidding these projects or these projects are gonna go through the rough.
That's true.
Well, with that said, and I'm not trying to say that the money doesn't matter, but this we, the. Bid on these projects were significantly less than than the second, third and fourth bid numbers that we saw. And that, again, I don't, I'm not saying we got room to spend all this money, that's not the point, but. I'm kinda back to your statement before, we're gonna do it right or we're not?
I I'm I I'll, I'm voting for the the number one, hauling out of there. Can we, can we vote for number one and then Chris can get, like, if you can put them rocks in there, get like an hourly.
I think on uh Chris's proposal, they had an hourly rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. For a skid steer.
So yeah, the most expensive option would be just, I say, okay, we authorize eighteen thousand dollars, we want you to haul it out, that's all you're gonna get. Or yeah, they have provided me some prices here for hourly rate of an excavator, this grizzly or screen. A track skid sto- skid loader and dozer to shape it up, that could be another option is. Do it hourly up to one of these dollar amounts or?
So Chris, if he hauls the rock out on that one side where the spoil piles are, then it's a, it's his. Duty to level that all out then, right? I mean, we shouldn't have no additional skid loader or anything.
Correct, if 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 the board today authorizes change order for item number one, they say. Hellman Construction, you you get a maximum of eighteen thousand dollars, you need to haul that spoil pile out and dress it up. Um afterwards, you're done.
And then we'll authorize him for taking the, taking the skid loader and bringing uh some of them rocks up to the to the bend.
But when it's done, the rock need to be dumped on.
But the rock need to be gone, if there's extra rock, I don't, he's gonna have to haul away.
You know, Mister Chair, this brings up another interesting question, in the future, when we're doing ditches, if we know it's a rocky area. That should be put into the contract immediately to haul it out.
Exactly, and I think that's what we're gonna try to do is fine tune our specs a little bit and what can help us is our technology. You know, to, again, who whose fault is it, I don't know that it's anybody's fault, I don't know that unless Luke was or. Contractors were gonna walk every foot of all these ditches, they're not gonna.
No, but but as they're excavating and they're seeing all these rocks come up, at least they know right away, they've gotta haul that stuff out.
And it would be nice if they had a heads up to it.
A- and to the contractor's benefit, I will mention, they did, as they were excavating, I was getting daily reports from them. And they, when they were through this area, they were sending me pictures saying, this is rocky way. Excessive than than before a- and there's, I don't know. That we would have known that unless we had taken soil borings in that area, knew that it was excessively rocky, so I think that's why us as engineers, we believe that this, maybe this is a little bit. Above and beyond what they could have known at the time of.
From my, Mister Chair, from my standpoint, I think Hellman Escavating has been a pretty good partner throughout all these ditches so far.
And more than just ditches, they did some pretty good highway work for a slice.
So I I think, I think we gotta take their. Their opinions uh to heart and and I think we 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 should be taking care of them and. Doing it the right way, especially if they were upfront and telling you every day that this is a lot rockier here, they're not trying to hide anything.
Chris, do you have a, I mean, is there a number that you would suggest, for example, if we were to move on item number one and then say we'll allow. Up to additional dollars for the hourly work, I mean, is there a number that? You know, up to this or?
Remove the other side?
To get the other side done?
Well, I I'd like to think that 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 other side, that using their track skid loader. I could move that around and and I think that's a a good solution, is just dump that on that bank at that location. So a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, I would think in eight hour day, they could get most, if not all that moved around. I would say another thousand dollars for hourly rate of a skid loader.
And obviously, if they need more, we're gonna have to talk again.
Well, okay, I will make a motion that we use item number one to haul out uh, they'd actually be the north side of the ditch, right? And then we allow the the track skid loader to remove the others and pile alongside you up to twelve hundred and fifty bucks, give them ten hours. Of work. That would be my motion.
Second, any other discussion? Any other discussion, hearing on all is in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's carried, thank you, Chris.
We will move forward and and get this going, so.
Any other items?
No, just we're continuing to work through uh some options on that ditch fourteen in the wetlands, so we do have, uh we had a meeting yesterday to discuss that. They've got a a depth two that we can, that that Houston believes that we can excavate and not impact the wetlands. So they're they're summarizing that in a memo to me that we can present back to the the tech panel and hopefully get authorization to move forward with.
That's just in the one area, right?
That's just in the one area, the the ones north of Highway twenty-three, those are depressional wetlands. And anytime you impact those, according to Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, it's at least a fifty percent uh impact. So right off the bat, fifty percent mitigation for those depressional wetlands north of. So once again, it's not the the cleaning cost, I think it's it's those replacement costs that could be that and.
And do you have a timeline, would you see something at the next ditch authority, you think?
Possibly, uh I would like to, that would be ideal, um the big thing is, you know, schedule a meeting, I think with uh. That kid before the first meeting in August, so.
Okay, so we wouldn't see it until the August ditch authority?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's what that's what I was thinking, yeah, it would be August, probably at the earliest that that you would see that, so.